One nation, undivided, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd just like to remind everyone that we are being broadcast live on cable as well as recorded for future rebroadcast either on cable or through the internet. We do not have a student representative tonight, so we're going to move right into public comment and communication. Does anyone have anything to discuss that was not in our posted agenda? Seeing none, we can move beyond that. Any old business to discuss? Any new business? Okay. School committee officer reorganization is our next item. We have run into another bit of an issue in getting our last school committee member officially on board. Just want to join us Julie, so. That was supposed to happen last night at the Board of Selectmen's meeting, but the Board of Selectmen did not have a quorum, so that meeting was canceled. It has been pushed off of their agenda on July 17th, I think, is their next meeting. So we are going to do our best to try to have ourselves a quorum at that meeting as well so we can get Lisa appointed. And then we have a meeting the following day, I believe, on July 18th.
Nineteenth.
That's nineteen.
Because that meeting is on the Monday.
Oh, that's on the Monday, okay. So Monday, July 17th, and then we meet on the nineteenth. So you're all set then?
Yeah, it works.
It works. So if there's no objections, I think we should defer school committee officer reorganizations until then.
I agree.
Okay. So next on our agenda is our superintendent's report. One of the items there is the continued discussion of collaborative with Education Alliance. We actually have an item in the consent agenda related to that, so we'll defer that part of Superintendent Maine's report until we get to the voting part. Do you have any other else in your report, Superintendent Maine?
That's it.
Okay. So we will move on to the accounts payable report then. So it's been a busy time of the year for accounts payable, all the bills that come and do at the end of the year here. So we, on June 14th, signed off on 23 batches to the tune of $537,174.37. Also had another batch we signed today, and we'll be signing them weekly over the next few weeks as we try to close the books out. And the details of the 23 that is mentioned right here for viewer viewing. And next time around, we should have probably four sets, I believe, at least three sets to bring forward to you. So. Any questions on the account payable report? Good. So moving to our consent agenda, first up is our June 6th meeting minutes. So the only thing I noticed, and was brought up by Courtney as well, was that Mr. Means is referred to as interim superintendent throughout this, and he is now our, no longer interim, he is our official superintendent. So just the meeting minutes need to be adjusted for that. I didn't see anything else that would need to be adjusted. It is referred, you know, it's referred to several times in here, so just make the comment that wherever it's, wherever he's referred to as interim superintendent should be adjusted. Any other comments on the, on the meeting minutes from June 6th?
No.
Looking for a motion then?
I'll make a motion to approve school committee meeting minutes for June 6th, 2018.
Motion by?
As presented, sorry.
As amended?
Amended.
Yeah. As amended. Motion by Jillian.
Second.
Second by Kelly. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Unanimous? Okay. Next up, we have our 2018-2019 school choice availability per grade for new students.
Yep, so in your packet, you should have a sheet that indicates present numbers, anticipated numbers, I guess, going forward, and what they believe would be the number of spots that are available for choice. So if you want, I'll go through them to start off with. We have the kindergarten, which is, at this time, is 80. The belief is that we have room for 12, no more than 12, up to 12, I guess is the way to say it.
So is that kindergarten based on current enrollment in kindergarten, or is that estimated enrollments based on last year, I guess?
Pre-K, and then...
That's what's already registered, okay. I know kindergarten's one of those ones where you're going to get...
Mm-hmm. Oh, yeah.
We anticipate that we will get more.
Yes.
Right. Okay.
And then for grade one, so advancing from kindergarten to grade one, with the number of the...
Is the 80, okay.
And again, that there is the availability for students in grade one. Grade two, 80 students, four teachers. They believe that they have availability for up to eight students in choice. Grade three has 100 students, four students. They believe that there is no room available for students in grade three, with an average of 25 per class. For, grade four, we have 81 students, again, with four teachers, and they believe that they could have room for up to eight students, no more than eight. Grade five has 77 students moving forward with four teachers. They believe that they have room for 12 students. At the middle school, there are six, in grade six, there are 105 students with four teachers. We believe that there is no room for students in that grade. Grade seven, I think this might have been a typo, has 124 with five teachers, so that 15 is obviously a mistake. I think that it was just duplicated. So with 124 with five teachers, you wouldn't have any room for anybody.
No.
So that was a mistake, so we should cross that 15 out at that point. That must have been a typo, and it should be zero. And then in grade eight, it has 100 students, five teachers, and we believe that we have room for up to 15 students in grade eight. And at the high school, there is availability in all four grade levels, up to and perhaps even beyond 15 in number. So I don't know if you wanted to vote these by school, or you wanted to do it collectively, if you wanted to make any adjustments and discuss, but that's, those are the anticipated, again, it's anticipated, but if you recall, last year, we waited until, I believe it was the first meeting in August, and then it became, we were getting a lot of phone calls from nervous parents, "Is my kid in? Is my kid not in?", and so forth.
My brain's not here.
My sense is that there's always going to be a few last-minute registries, registers who come in. We anticipate that, but these seem to be, the admin team, I think, is in agreement that these seem to be pretty good numbers that we could, we could go forward with.
I have a couple of comments. I don't know how you want to do it, by school?
Okay.
So I do know that there are a couple of kids that haven't made decisions that I'm pretty sure they're not going to be going to these, the school here. So, I don't know, I'm like so nervous about putting zeros. I feel like we want school choice kids in here.
But you could come back, and if we do see it, that that number is not an accurate number, in other words, more kids left, you could always bring it back and say that we have a number of applications for grade seven, and the final number is not 124 now. You know, seven kids went to some other school, and we think we have room for, you could always vote to open it back up again.
So like, for example, grade six?
Yep.
How many kids per, I'm like trying to do the math.
Twenty-six.
I can't.
We don't want any more than that.
No.
Oh, you know what I was doing? I was looking at the six, meaning six teachers.
No, no.
That's why I was so baffled. Sorry.
No, no.
They're at capacity there. That's even higher than I would like to see.
Yeah, there's three, there's three classes that clearly are at a capacity level, and then there are other classes, the other grades do have room.
But those are, that's also the grades where they switch students to. I don't know, I just, I don't like telling people absolutely no, and then I know that there's going to be spots that open up.
Well, how do we communicate? When, is it a wait list situation with regards to choice? Is that how we communicate it? Where we say, "We're full for now, we're not accepting anymore"?
Lauren, we'll contact them and say, "At this point, the school committee has voted that there is no availability in grade seven. Should that change in the summertime, we would, we would reach out to you and let you know." So there's no harm in closing it based on the fact that this is what you know you have. You can always come back to it and say, you know, "Maybe we can take two or three." As a matter of fact, we did that last year, if you recall, and we, and you made the decisions not, not to add additional seats, because we, we had some changes in numbers at the end of the, at the end of the summer, and I said, "We do have some availability if you, if the, in the committee voted not to do so," which is purely upper-arranging. So you could always vote to add seats if you, if you wanted to.
That's where I lean towards, I lean towards playing it safe here. I mean, we, we just, you know, brought teachers back to bring down class sizes. I don't think it's...
Overcommit and bring yourself back, you know, in a position where you're at 28 in a class, or something like that. And I think the other thing that, at least, I'm keeping in mind is that, again, the development up on North Street, right, went in, and I know that's not filled yet, so I think you can expect, you know, some new registrations coming throughout the summer with that.
Oh, there's movements the day of school.
I've already had two before the year's over, so.
Yeah, and I know, I know there's, I know there's, they're still filling that, so I think...
Yeah, we're having 10 to 15 moving over the summer.
I think you can expect to get, you know, quite a few of in-town new registrations this summer, just from that development, I would think.
Like, I would even hate to commit to saying some of these numbers at...
You can change the numbers, we're just saying, this is our feedback to you, was that, where we thought we could be. It's, it's up to, it's up to you as to whether or not, I mean, you could say that for right now, you want to, you want to do six instead of 12, or you could say...
Yeah, well, even on like the K and one, the 12 plus, I might limit it to just the 12. That's going to put you at 23 per class.
You could also say eight if you want to, or you could say six.
Yeah.
I'd rather play it safe. I mean, we've...
We're just trying to present you what we think of the ballpark.
We've worked hard to get these numbers down. I don't want to see them go up.
The only thing is, is once we tell these kids in the younger grades, and they're probably going to get settled, so, that's why I keep thinking, like, in the younger grades, let's get them in now. People are going to leave.
No, agree, but I think if they're, if they're trying to school choice into us as well, and we tell them no on July, you know, late June, early July, and they come back in August, I'm thinking they still want to choice into us at that point. I don't, I don't know.
Right. It's, it's hard on a family to make them wait till August, but we have to do what's right for the Douglas kids.
Yes.
Yeah, and just, again, I think that new developments carries me most of all.
Get a big influx of kids, and then we're back to large class sizes.
Because keep in mind as well that we only receive $5,000 per child from the state for school choice.
Yeah.
If you go over a number, and you require at least a $44,000 teacher, then, you know, and keep in mind also as well, that once you do accept a child, that's for the whole duration. Unless, of course, they move or something, but...
Does that work for siblings too? If you, if you, so if you accepted, just, you know, knowing that we have space in high school? If you had a family that had a high school and younger kids?
Right. But if, so if a family said that I have, I have a child in grade seven, and I've got a child in grade nine, I would say to them that we wouldn't be able to accommodate the grade seven, so therefore, I wouldn't offer them the seat.
So at what point would you be communicating that there are spots open and saying, and committing? Because we're in...
I think if, I think if you come up with some preliminary numbers now, we can then, that we do have applications in waiting right now, so that we could add some, and then come back again in August and look at the numbers, and you could decide to reduce, increase, and so forth. But to Julie's point, you could get some students who we know are in the pipeline, and we do have room for them, let's, let's get them the information so they can get themselves registered sooner rather than later.
What grades do you mostly have applications on, do you know, out of curiosity?
It's across the board. There's not, there's not a ton just yet, but there are some. It tends to be in the next month or so, we'll get, we'll get a lot, it'll come through. Well, they're going to come in in the next month or so, because people are going to want to have that all ironed out before August.
Yeah, I would, I would recommend at least on the K and one, just to leave it at 12 even, and I would entertain going lower and be, be okay with that. I wouldn't go any higher than the 12. I would remove the plus from that.
I think we should go down. We're going to be at...
You want to go to eight?
Eight is fine.
Yeah, I would go with eight with both of those. Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
We shouldn't need, require an additional teacher, to your point.
Yeah.
Because you could have people moving in, and Cindy can attest, Mrs. Sosha can attest to the fact that...
No, and I'd hate to see the year start, and now we're at capacity, and then another student moves in.
Can we just, you know, add it for our next meeting? It's a month, it's a month from now, we'll have a better idea on what's come in and revisit at that point.
I would say for the first meeting, if we have two in August, which we've done in the past, then we would definitely want to do it in the first meeting in August.
But do you even review in the July, July meeting, around what applications we've had, and where that would put us? Just so we know, even as we're going into August.
Do you want to adjust any of the other numbers that are in there? Because then I'll go through them again, and you can vote on it.
Okay.
I feel bad for fifth grade, so we definitely should leave it at 12.
We'll get you at 90.
We're all 22 now.
Yeah, I think just the K and the one, I think is a reasonable...
Go to eight, and then leave everything else? I'm, I'm good with that?
Yeah, I agree.
So you want to read through them all?
I'll read through it again. So in, in the primary school, K has openings at this time for school choice for eight, as does grade one, has eight. Elementary school in grade two, eight seats for grade two, no seats for grade three, eight seats for grade four, and 12 for grade five. In the middle school, no seats available in grade six and grade seven. Seats are available up to 15 in grade eight. And 9, 10, 11, and 12 at the high school has availability up to 15 or greater.
Want to hand a motion?
No, 115, five teachers.
This morning?
I move that we accept our projected enrollment class sizes for 2018, 2019 for school choice, as discussed at tonight's meeting of June 20th.
Motion by Jillian, seconded by Jillian. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Okay, and so I will make a note that we're going to try to add, we'll come back to you with an update in the July meeting as to how many spaces have been filled and what the numbers are.
Yeah, and then with the intention of potentially voting on additional seats in August, the first meeting in August.
Yeah. Which I think is, is wise, because as everybody knows, it's usually the third week in August when people who just decided they want to come in. Oh, by the way, we moved the town back in May, but we're, we want to register our child now, which is always a problem.
So do we just vote all of these numbers?
Yep.
And then, it seems to me that that is available, what we have. Yep, okay.
Yeah, those are the numbers that we changed these to eight.
Yep, just those two, and the rest we left to see.
Yes, we voted as amended.
Yep. Okay. Very good.
Okay. Next item is disposal of DHS climbing harnesses.
Coming forward with that one?
So this equipment is part of the Project Adventure kits that are in the gym. We're not taking down any of the, the actual climbing apparatuses and cables and things like that. We're just looking to dispose of the helmets and the safety harnesses, because they're no longer legally authorized to be used. So concussion protocols, safety laws have changed, so those harnesses and helmets, we can't use them. So even if we had the money and the training to start Project Adventure tomorrow, we would need to get new helmets, and these, these helmets and safety harnesses can't be used, so.
So they're 13 years old, so they weigh out of compliance now?
Yeah. The wearout life on them, and, and, so what we'll do is, we'll, we'll cut the harnesses. We really should cut the helmets. There was some talk about, like, well, maybe they can use them in the drama program or something as props. I'd rather just cut them, because I don't want somebody using them thinking, "Oh, this will be a great bike helmet," and then it turns out it's not safe. But, so that's what we need to do. So we just need you guys to vote to get rid of that. I do hold out hope that someday, Project Adventure itself will come back. I have great memories of doing that.
That's the same hope I had for nine years.
Yeah. I've had that same hope too for nine years.
Some things were just passed on, right, from Mr. Means to me.
I've heard that a few times.
So.
I do move that we approve of the disposal of the Douglas High School climbing harnesses, and by discarding them and cutting them up, so no one will be able to use them.
Second.
Second by Jillian. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Thank you very much, Mr. Romano. Actually, you might want to hang around.
Yeah, I was going to say, I think I'm coming up again.
Yeah, next up is DHS History Club stipend.
So this, we approved a history club, we ran a history club, and it turns out, you guys never actually voted to pay the person to authorize the stipend, it was just an oversight.
We had a wonderful conversation, the discussion was really, really good.
It must have been a long one.
We neglected one step, which was for the school committee to take a vote to approve a stipend of $677 for the history club advisor. And so that's what we are asking you to do tonight.
All right, I'll move to approve a stipend in the amount of $677 for the Douglas High School History Club advisor, and add it to Appendix C of the Douglas Teachers Association Contract. This approval is retroactive to September 6th, 2017.
Second.
Second by Jillian, seconded by Julie. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Unanimous? Thank you, Ms. Romano.
I have like three more.
All right, Ms. Romano's back. All right, now we are revisiting, returning to the GTA Appendix C proposal that we discussed last week, but this is a little bit different twist on the discussion.
So here is, the reason for us bringing this back to you, as we indicated that we would, is that we had broken it up for easy understanding and digesting of it, of it by high school inactive, no longer active, that we voted out, but we knew we had to bring the, the entire document back to the format that it was before. So what you have now is, everything has been, even the positions that presently are inactive are listed there. And so, again, what we said the other, at the last meeting, was that these positions are there, but that does not necessarily mean that all of these positions are active and being funded. But if we want to make them active and fund them, we don't have to come back to you and have a vote to bring them back. So all we have done is simply put it in a, in a format that has the high school programs first, then it gets into the middle school, and then it gets into the elementary, and then the primary, and then the district-wide positions are all listed there, and the verbiage that was in there along. So the purpose for bringing this back to you today was for you to see that this is the final version of what it's going to look like when, and added, it'll be added into the contract once it gets approved, and we'll get it processed and put into the contract. Hopefully, it's neater, it's a little bit easier to understand, and, and we've accounted for everything that was discussed, including the proposals that were made and were approved at the last meeting, they are inclusive in here.
Okay.
It's not, it won't go on the, until we, until we vote on the 19 and 20 piece of it, which will, is, is something that we will do today in executive session.
So we don't need to do anything with this?
So...
I don't thi, I think...
Yeah, it doesn't feel like, I don't know.
Since we proved everything was...
FYI, or?
Well, more informational than anything else.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. So next, field hockey cooperative with Blackstone Millville.
So, we are seeking approval to join a two-year cooperative team with Blackstone Millville for field hockey, JV and varsity. We haven't had our own team, is it two years?
Three years, like.
Three years. We haven't had our own team. We did a, a survey among the students. We had 10 to 12 students who were interested in joining a field hockey program. Not enough to run our own team, but, so we reached out to a couple of various schools. Blackstone Millville was more than happy to have us. Basically, the deal's, it's a $225 student user fee, basically the same schedule that we have for our athletes here. BMR takes care of the officials, the supplies, the coaches. There's no transportation provided. That's pretty standard for co-ops. We don't provide transportation for ice hockey and the other co-ops. We do try to facilitate carpooling, but that's about the most we get involved in transportation. BMR does pay for transportation to, from BMR to their, wherever they're playing in away game. It's been approved by the Dual Valley Principals and ADs and by the MIAA. And it's part of a, ultimately, like, we would like to, Mr. Means and I were talking about bringing in the possibility of building up field hockey in the middle school, so that we can build it into a JV team, so that by the time the co-op ends, maybe we can have our own program again. Because there's some interest there, and just, field hockey's one of those things, if you've ever played field hockey, it's just a really hard sport. I, I did a couple of practices with the kids. I grew up playing hockey, field hockey's way harder. So we want to create this opportunity for kids and try to build it back up into our own program again. So that's what we're looking for you to approve. The, I think you have the, the basics of the agreement in front of you.
So all, all home games would be at BMR?
So we, Mary and I were talking, Mary Sokol and I were talking about, maybe we can rig one game, two games to be played here instead. Mr. Colette, don't listen. But we, we would like to maybe have one or two games that we could play here, just like we've done with the football co-op, where they play a home game here.
And, from my information, because I'm not sure if I understood this, with the co-ops, we don't share any of the expenses?
No, basically, essentially, it's the user fees go there instead. Yeah.
In the football co-op, we do, there's a $5,500 fee for the football co-op.
Football's very expensive.
Yep.
Okay, that the, that the school bear is beyond any of the, okay, fees. But do the football players pay a fee directly to sign on that? Or they would pay us, and then the 65, we, we pay?
That's a very good question.
I believe they pay us, and then we pay.
In this case?
No, maybe we don't.
I think...
No?
No, they did not. Do you remember?
I thought they paid us.
More of a curiosity, I don't want to hold this discussion, but...
But this one, they don't pay us.
Yeah, for the football, it was an additional, like, $6.
So in this case, the, the, the field hockey players would, would pay BMR, the $225, directly? They wouldn't pay anything to us? That'd be the extent of it.
The only concern that I have, but, I mean, I'm totally supportive of field hockey, even though I was a soccer player, and soccer was here, and field hockey was here, and the field hockey players. What, what time do the kids go there? Do they go there right after school?
Right after school, yeah. It's about the same time as practices would start for everybody else here, yeah.
Because of the location, it's, it's probably about 10, 12 minutes to get over to BMR, so the upside is that we haven't had the program for a few years, and, and we actually reached out to BMR last year, and they did not have an interest at that point. Their numbers are down also. They run the risk of eventually their program could be compromised as well, and now we both don't have a program. This way, it gives us a, an opportunity for those who have a genuine interest now to participate, and as, as Mr. Romano said, we really want to, once again, try to rekindle excitement around field hockey in, in Douglas, so that we can have our own programs again, which we did have before, we had a varsity and a sub-varsity. The sub-varsity was made up mostly of the middle school kids, and the varsity was made up of the high school kids. So it just affords those, eight to 10 kids, if they're willing to make the commitment, an opportunity to be part of it. It will be the Blackstone Millville-Douglas co-op. And right now, Blackstone Millville has Hope Deal, the co-op is in with them for football, because they want to start a program, and they didn't have enough. So unfortunately, with numbers being down a little bit, that's kind of what we're trying to do, but it will provide the kids the opportunity to play, which is, which is the good thing.
Yeah, it's good.
And it is approved by the MIAA, which is the big hurdle, so...
Yeah, that's the big hoop to get through.
Okay.
Make a motion?
Yeah, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the field hockey cooperative with Blackstone Millville as proposed.
Second.
Motion made by Jillian, seconded by Kelly, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. I did reach out to Mary Sokol to see how exactly the deal goes with football. I'll let you know when, if I get the answer.
Okay, good, thank you. Next up, we are revisiting the DHS foreign language trip proposal.
You guys are up.
Okay, hi.
Hello.
So, we're asking for permission to sponsor a trip to Barcelona in Spain.
Just introduce yourself for us, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Ms. Gloria, I'm a Spanish teacher here at Douglas High School.
I'm Ellen Weaver, I'm the Spanish teacher at the middle school.
Thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, we would like to sponsor a trip to Spain and Barcelona for summer 2019 through a program called Education First Tours. Douglas Public Schools is not affiliated with EF Tours whatsoever. The only thing we ask permission for is to use the school for informational meetings for the trip.
So, a couple of things with that is that the, any posters and any meetings that are held will always quantify that it is not a school-sponsored trip, that it's education first, is it? Yeah, that runs the trip, the tour. And the other issue for coming back was that there was an issue with regards to going in April, that they were going to miss a couple of days of school. And so, I believe you've changed your dates for the trip?
Yes, so, we have, the earliest departure date would be June 27th, 2019, which I believe would be after school's ended, and the latest return date, July 12th. They don't actually tell us until three months right before the trip if the exact date's within that time, but it's an eight-day trip and it would be between June 27th and July 12th, earliest and latest.
So, we would need to have probably ten or eleven snow days in order for that to-
Okay, that's what I was going to ask you, what the last day was.
... conflict with the last few days. Although, I will say, was it two years ago? That, three years ago, that we went to June?
Yeah, we've been there until the end of June.
Just a quick question, if that does happen and students miss finals, what happens there?
It would problem.
Yeah.
Big problem.
But that wouldn't involve the seniors, that would just involve possibly juniors.
Underclassmen.
Juniors, and, but it's open to any grade level.
Yeah, it's open to all grade levels in the high school. And, I mean, the cost did change from April now for the summertime.
Yeah, what was the difference?
The difference is $500. The trip now for the summer date would be a total of $3,305 per student. But they can do monthly payments, which would be, if they signed up, like, this month, would be around $292 a month, or they can do bi-weekly payments every two weeks, which would be cheaper. They could, once they enroll on the trip, they can pay however they want to pay, how much and how little. They just need to have the entire trip paid in full one month before departure.
When does enrollment open, close?
Enrollment can open as soon as tomorrow, if it's approved. I need to, I don't know exactly how long they have to enroll, they like to give a specific timeframe, but I'd have to get that information from EF Tours, since we now changed the, moved the dates to the summertime. But I can get that information.
Do you know, is there any trip insurance included? Or is it possible for them to get trip insurance, just going back to the, if we have fifteen snow days, you know, discussion?
That's a good question.
That might be an option to, and if you don't have the answer now, it's something that you could explore possibly.
I know they do do refunds, I would have to, like, get the full details on that, though, but I can ask them.
Okay, thanks.
Is this the same organization that the July trip is through?
Yes, so we're going through this program next month for the Costa Rica trip, so...
And how many students from Douglas are attending that?
Forty.
About forty.
Yeah.
Forty?
Yep.
Holy mackerel.
Yeah, we have six chaperones, so...
Good deal.
It'd be great.
Any other questions? Entertaining a motion?
I'll move that the school committee approve the non-school-sponsored trip to Spain, Barcelona, Madrid in summer 2019. The school committee approves the dissemination of materials regarding the trip with the school, as well as the opportunity for the representation of Education First Tours to use the space within the high school to conduct informational meetings for those attending this trip.
Motion by Jillian. Seconded by Kelly, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck in Costa Rica.
Thanks.
Right, next, we have Class of 2018, class trip account, donation of remaining funds.
You want to go ahead, Mr. Romano?
Miss Romano's back.
There's an empty seat.
Yeah, no. So, this one is the, I'm sorry, this one's the donation from the Disney World trip, or is this the-
Class trip account.
Yeah, from the class trip account. So, essentially, the class has two accounts, the class of 2018. They have the one for their Disney trip, and then they have their regular class activity fund. We're looking to close out the trip account, put that money into the, do I still have it right? Put that money into the activity fund account, which they're then going to use, that, they'll close out that account probably at the July meeting.
Well, they're both activity accounts, so we're putting it in the regular class account.
We're combining it into one account.
2018 account.
So, now, the students who went on that trip, who, it is their money, they're the ones who paid into it, they voted at a class meeting during the graduation rehearsal extravaganza to allow the class officers to decide how to disclose of that money. The class officers voted to have it put into the class 2018 account, which they'll then close out hopefully any day now.
Okay, so we're not actually donating the money right now, we're just transferring it from one account to another account.
Yep, just moving it out and closing that account, basically.
And then, what they need to do, which he was just alluding to, is that all class accounts must be closed out. That's actually was an audit issue, you know, a few years back. So, we did beef up our policy with regard to that, and the high school has done a fabulous job with all their accounts and really, working really hard to get them moved out. Because once students graduate, it's no more, it's not long long legal to have a class of account. So, they either remove the funds and they put it in a reunion account or something, but they're doing really, really well.
Elaine McDermott has done a great job of getting those accounts closed.
At a future meeting, we expect to see that the class of 2018 account, something's going to happen with that.
Right, they'll open their own account at another bank and then we'll-
Right.
-give those money.
Yeah.
Right. And they can just do that, that doesn't have to come to the school committee. They just have to sign off on it and we put it on a warrant, and then they have to open up their own bank account, and then we have nothing whatsoever to do with it after that.
Okay.
So, we need a motion to-
So, the motion is to transfer, is it to transfer, to consolidate, what's the rate?
To transfer the $620, $621 from the 2018 class trip student activity account to the class of 2018 student activity account. And you can just say so moved if you-
So moved.
All right, motion by Jillian, seconded by Kelly. Any other discussion? Any others in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good, unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see what's next.
You might as well stay there, you're coming up again.
Yeah, let's stay there, let's move our next item up to next. Let's revisit our discussion on the collaborative with Education Alliance. Do you want to take that? Kick us off, Mr. Mainz?
So, at the last meeting, as you recall, everybody was in favor of going forward and voting, but we had not put it on the agenda for a vote, so, but we had gone today, just an update. Mr. Romano, I, myself, went to Natick and met with two of the officials and had a two-hour conversation in which we were able to address concerns, any questions we might have to get some greater clarity on it. Much like we had said in previous meetings, as a school district, we know that we need to look at some new initiatives going forward. And by that, I'm talking about course offerings, whether it be a business pathway or a engineering pathway, or expanding on manufacturing in animal and plant science, medical science. We talked about all of that as part of the plan. And the, what they will provide for us is a consultant service to help us with, I think when we finally got done talking with them, we came to an understanding that it was really sort of like a roadmap to help us to get moving on these initiatives. So, they would be educational consultants, they would also help us with the opportunity to, for grants and so forth. They would come in and do some surveys and provide us with some of their expertise in this area, as we talked about it, they have quite a good deal of experience at the college level. They do have some experience at the high school level. And this is sort of the continuation of the conversation that we've been having all along of moving Douglas in a new, in a direction where we're going to try to bring some new initiatives, new courses, new programs, to continue to keep us as competitive as possible within the Blackstone Valley. The best example I can give you is, when we go back to the MIMZI, the Math Science Initiative, we had a captivated audience, and people came to us because we had all of these advanced placement courses. Well, then, everybody heard that Douglas had done the MIMZI, and so, Blackstone did it, Blackstone Millville did it, Blackstone Valley Tech did it, NIPMUC did it, Sutton did it. So, everybody, so now, it's no longer exclusive to us that we have all of these APs. So, this is the next, the next area, is bringing in some new pathways that are going to provide an interest level for students who may not be able to access these programs in their district, that they may want a school choice into us. And so, this is a, an opportunity to, for a consultant's fee for one time, and then it's all based on what we would want to do with them, is asking for their assistance. They are sort of, they are just that, they are consultants for us. And based on this program, we would look to get a vote to go forward with that. I don't know if you guys want to speak to your experience today as well?
Sure, yeah, it was a good meeting, I'm definitely glad I went. To your earlier points, Dr. Samuels is a very, Samuels is a very interesting guy. Tough to pin him down on some answers, but I think, I did get, you know, a lot of the answers that I was looking for today. The work that they're looking to help us with, I think, is vital to our future. I think the program that he's proposing, he has a vision of, is very interesting. The devil's going to be in the details. But I think this first step is a step that we absolutely have to take in order to explore this. Because I think we have to do something like this regardless of whether it's with their help or try to do it on our own or with someone else's help. And I think for the $68, $50 one-time expense this time around, it's definitely worth looking into.
Mr. Romano?
I was very glad that Dr. Samuels' colleague was there to provide some brevity. And, you know, I think she can, she's sort of the methodical one, where he's sort of the vision of eighteen different things going through his head. I think, you know, I don't, I don't think we can go wrong really by doing this initial dip into it. You know, I'd like to see, you know, for my part, like, what I think they bring is the expertise that they bring in terms of the curriculum, that we might, the way that we would structure these programs, and then the grants. I think if they can come in for six grand, we can have them help us with some grants, which, you know, I've done grants in the past, it's very time-consuming, you put in a lot of work, and then maybe you get $2,000 from Dollar Store. If these guys can come in and get us something, because, you know, that's-
They seem to have some expertise, we've seen them have success.
That's one of their areas.
Expertise and connections, and that's what we're really buying, I think, is this network of knowledge that we otherwise don't have access to. Because if you were serious about pursuing the animal science piece, which I do find interesting, or maybe the plant and soil science piece, which, you know, could have some other benefits in terms of bringing horticulture courses in for the general curriculum, it's helpful to have somebody who kind of already has that curriculum worked out and can kind of advise you on that.
That's the other thing that came through to me, is that not only, I think, do they have the expertise to provide a blueprint or a roadmap going forward, but the connections that they have to hook us up with area universities in order to get involved with their programs and bring them here and bring us there, to kind of be involved in those programs, as well as their involvement at the state level is something that we're going to need.
I was very interested in the coding thing, that, I haven't heard that in a previous discussion, but I think that that's a great opportunity for us, if we can bring in more coding.
Architectural design is another area that I was asking them about, is that they have a connection, they have an agreement with Boston College of Architecture. So, that is a nice piece for us as well, is architecture and design. But the fact of, the primary factor is that these are things that we have been discussing for a year anyways. And there is great viability in them, and I think it's really important stuff to bring to the school district. They are, it's still going to be incumbent upon us to drive the engine to get it all taken care of. But rather than us having to try to do all of the initial legwork and research and so forth, they, as consultants, can help us with that, and that might allow us to get this going a little bit sooner than anticipated. But these are all things that we have talked about. And I think that the animal and plant science is a natural fit for us because we have some connections and some relationships in the community already. And there's no question that the, that agribusiness has changed dramatically, and it's not, you know, going out to Kansas and planting, you know, 500 acres with corn. It's much more sophisticated than that, a lot of it is being done in warehouses, better conditions, better crop yields, hydroponics and aqua, something or other, aqua form-
Permaculture that he talks about, too, yeah.
So, there's all of these new, these new industries that are going to be coming out, and we have the opportunity to get our kids going on that, I think that's, that makes good sense.
And you'll probably be able to phrase it better, but the thing about aligning every kid with a career.
Yeah, you know, that was maybe the thing that he said that kind of, that I liked, that maybe gave, maybe give him another listen, was that the idea, we need to tie every kid to a career, and even if it doesn't end up being the career that they then do for 50 years, we give them a goal, something that they're working to our, working towards and a focus. And I like that idea of, I've always been supportive of bringing that kind of thing of the career interest inventories and stuff like that, and you give the kid, sort of, a student gets a purpose to what they're doing in school.
So, I think there's some elements to what he's proposing that go beyond just helping us spin up an agriculture program.
Right.
There's something that'll touch every member of the student body in what he's discussing.
Right, that exploratory piece that he was talking about.
Yeah, it's tough to figure out how to execute on some of that, but he has some ideas that go beyond just a focus that might be of interest to 20 of our students. There's some things there that are going to touch the entire district, so...
And the numbers are going up, too, of everybody leaving because of the fact that there's more program offerings at BBT, at our other school, where the numbers are really going up. And that's a very expensive school, so I, I think it's important that we go forward.
It was, and I agree with that, there was one other piece that was another, that we should, we had talked about previously, and that is the student's ability to earn college credits while in school. So, they have a program, and it's already in place, and I know it's being used in the Norfolk District, is that teachers with master's degrees in, basically become sort of adjunct teachers. And so, that the course that they're offering, the students actually, based on the curriculum that is approved by, say, Mount Wachusett, or, not, it's Wachusett, the community called it. Is it Mount Wachusett?
Mount Wachusett.
Yeah.
Mount Wachusett, right?
Yeah.
Or UMass Stockbridge, or some, something along those lines. Students would actually be earning credits through the course that they're taking in high school.
So, the same class would be earning them their diploma credits for high school, as well as earning them, you know, undergraduate credits for beyond.
Much like we have in our 12-year program, where the students can go to Quinn Sig and take their senior year, but they still have to do other things here at the school.
This is dual.
Just doing it right here, so instead of going to Quinn Sig. So, there's another piece, there's clearly some lifting that's going to need to be done. But we've been talking about it for a year, we know that at some point, we're going to have to move forward with some new initiatives. And the beauty of it is, hopefully, it will be that, something that will captivate students in the area who are going to want a choice to Douglas for the programs, much like they did with the AP programs six, seven, eight years ago, which we saw a noticeable bump in school choice when we went to the AP program with MIMZI.
Do you want to vote on this now?
Yes.
Yeah, so, we're voting on the expenditure of the $6,850, Mr. Mainz, is that the appropriate vote? The only question I think that we have remaining is the timing of when the contract with them would start.
Yeah, it should be July 1st.
No, it does say July, it will say July 1st, yeah.
Oh, that was fixed, okay.
What Brett was talking about is that they do a lot of initial legwork, meeting with parents, with students, with faculty, and with school ending in two days. We tried to present to him that that might be very problematic. So, I then presented it to Lisa, who heard me say that, and now she understands that that might be a problem. So, that, one of the things that we would address with them is, if we're not able to secure some parents and some teachers and some students that want to meet in the summertime to meet with them and to get some information, would they bump it back to the subject?
Yeah, you know, I'm fine with it starting July 1st, but does it have to be 45 continuous days? Or is it possible that it starts July 1st, but, you know, those 45 days might get pushed out, you know?
So, and we've already laid the groundwork with that, with telling them, as I said, his assistant, that that might be a challenge for us to get people together in the summertime. We would just need to probably look to move it into the month of August, if that's the case.
Can we just present that as that's what we'd like to do? Or is that not really optional?
I think what they're trying to do is, so one of the things is that we're trying to get, part of the program is to take and enlist eighth graders who might want to take a field trip out to UMass to look at their programs. So, they have a number of programs out there that they've already, that he's already associated with, but then they also get to tour the campus as well, and sort of set the table that, you know, you can do both. You can, if you're interested in agribusiness, you could, or plants, animal science, you could do that. If you want to be a veterinarian, you can do that. But then also have the opportunity to be on a college campus as an eighth grader, to start the mindset of, you know, this is what college is about, and sort of set that mindset. So, he's hoping that we can get that done. If we can't, then it'd have to be, and I did say to her that I thought maybe that might be more like October or November, to which she heard me say it, and so she's-
She wrote it down, I checked.
Right, so, I guess, so I'm looking for a motion to give Mr. Mainz permission to enter into our contract with the Education Alliance for a 45-day engagement in the amount of $6,850.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jillian, seconded by Julie. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the other piece of it was that we talked about was that it's totally in our control list. If we need another, so in other words, they're going to give us stuff, we're going to digest it, we're going to try to work with it, and then if we, if we need to consult with them again, we give them a call and say, listen, we're looking to do another consulting contract. This is just this one contract, 45-day agreement. The service, I gave you all the information on what the services that they're going to provide. We get that, we assess it, and then if we feel that we need to go back and ask for some additional assistance, we can do that.
Mr. Mainz, if you could just make that, we discussed in the car, with that one, add that one piece of their contract around the gap analysis.
Right.
Again, I think it might be in there kind of implicitly, I'd like to see it be a little more explicit in there.
So, he offered us the opportunity, the three of us, to sort of figure out if there's anything, because one of the things that was not in there was information on the architecture. And we would want to put that in there, that's something that we want information on, the program, the curriculum, and so on and so forth. So, we should probably keep in contact so that we can draw that up and then get it back to him at that point.
We're having lunch with Lisa next week, is that, we'll make sure that's one of the points that gets included.
Very good.
Thank you. I think I'm very excited.
Well, I mean, we give it a shot, nothing ventured, nothing gained at this point.
Exactly.
Yeah, no, it is, and I think the biggest thing I took out, again, it was kind of far away, it's kind of way back, it's something where if we don't act, the schools around us, you know, are involved with him. know, are involved with them, it's just going to be more of our students going to Oxford to do manufacturing, and Northbridge to do, or vice versa, to do engineering, and we don't have another program that's pulling in some of their students to us, so it's just, it's just a net drag on us, because other, other area schools right next door are looking to work with these same folks, so.
Well, it's sound academically, because we've been talking about this.
No, it is, yeah.
As an admin team, we talked about it just, just two days ago.
Yeah.
Last week, we went through it, I'm sorry, we went through it in great, great detail. So it makes good academic sense.
Yeah.
But it also is a competitive edge that we need to have in order to, again.
Right.
Bring some more kids back in, keep kids here that may not want to go. You know, if we can get an animal and plant science program in place in short time, I would think that if you lived in Douglas, you'd rather do that in Douglas than drive an hour both, both ways, and we were talking about if you were a coral kid or a soccer kid, it's hard to do those sports if you're driving an hour on a bus, and if mom has to come pick you up, it's an hour to get you, an hour to bring you back. It's a big commitment. You know, hopefully we can, we can come up with something that makes really good sense academically, but also keeps our kids here and brings more kids into our district.
And will we have an answer? I know until the program's up, we won't know, but as to whether this agricultural program would make Norfolk Aggie no longer an option.
That would be a process, that would be a curriculum piece, and then getting it chapter 74 approved, that would make that happen. So that won't happen right away.
Right.
A sign of Mr. Mainz's commitment to this program is that Mr. Mainz is not a fan of animals.
Not at all.
Well, there's clearly a very big interest in animals, so it's the right thing to do. Having been out at the Douglas Farm and Orchard the other day, they do have a number of animals, and they are more than happy to tell you about them, so.
Okay, next on our agenda is our FY 2019 general fund budget.
All right.
So that's our envelope or folder here?
Yes, it is.
I'm starting off with administrative team recommended budget adjustments post-override. Now, we presented a lot of this already.
Hold on.
Post-override, okay.
Team record anybody on the post-override, okay.
All set?
Yes.
So none of this is in any court of, any sort of prioritized order? We did, as a group, meet, we did go over this, oh, you did number them, okay. So I didn't see the, I didn't see the left-hand side. So you can see on the left-hand side the priority listings. I'll put this in the middle, because I forgot my homework. So the first thing on the, on the docket there is presently, we have two positions that are just not categorized appropriately, and we would like to create the correct designation for their job-specific performance, and also the recommendation for a adjustment based on the fact that they are not being paid as technicians, they're being paid, and I believe they're being paid as.
Actually, currently, one of the DANA staff is paid under the para category, one under the bookkeeper category. So just to let you know, while you have brought this up, Mr. Mainz, that these are, our recommendations are included in what we're going to propose later on the agenda as well.
So we were looking to pay them on the baker's salary, I'm just kidding. So that's the first one. The second one is an adjustment counselor, a full-time adjustment counselor at the primary school, which at this point is a .4 position, FTEs. It will become a full-time position that would then thereby make the person who is .6 at the elementary school a full-time person, which would mean that we'd have an adjustment counselor in the primary school and in the elementary school. We already have one in the middle school, so that was, that's that piece. Followed by custodian, so one of the places that has been also devastated over the years is the reduction in custodial staff. We are looking to move a .5 to a, to basically a 1.0 position.
Well, we're actually, we're bringing on an additional .5.
Right.
Yeah.
So what that will allow us to do, and Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong in this, is that it would allow us to have two people at night in the elementary school, and two people at night in the middle school as well, and two at the high school.
Yeah, we currently have two, yeah.
Right. As you know, we're sharing people within buildings and so forth, this, this position would allow us that. You know, it's clear that you have a lot of space to clear and clean and deal with. This is, this has long been needed, and that would allow us to get a little bit better staffing-wise at all four of our buildings for custodial services.
And it, but it doesn't address, I mean, we would really appreciate that, but as you know, we, we expanded our grounds greatly with the school project. It does not address the grounds. So while we would appreciate that, I just want to remind, you know, that we're still not where we would really need to be, but we would definitely appreciate that additional .5.
This is a starting point anyways.
Right, starting point, mhm.
At the, let's see here, so I already talked about the elementary school adjustment counselor's position. There is a need to return one of the special education positions that was cut a few years back, Neely? Basically, to help us to ensure service delivery is, is being, being met. Right now, we are stretched very, very thin. It's a big school, there's, there's quite a bit of servicing, and it's becoming very difficult. This is, this is a position that would help us to better address service deliveries for all of our students that, that have a need, and give our, give us a better ratio for our liaisons as well.
Stay in compliance.
And then the other position at the elementary school was to add a part-time, a .3, a .38.
Yeah, how does that make sense?
It is.
So basically, we're looking to hire.
We're splitting between two schools.
We're looking to hire a clerk at .6, so a part-time position that would be split between two buildings. There had always been a clerk in each building. We're not looking to bring back both clerks right now, but we do, there is clearly a need for, for at least a part-time clerk to come in that could help us to address both buildings. So it's, it's point, it's part of the job, half the job is at the elementary, the other half will be at the middle school. It's a .6 position, basically. So you see it in the, you see at the middle school, the, the secretarial wages position for the office clerk, that's the other half of it. We had talked at some, at some length previously, that we presently offer gym, but we do not offer health. We would like to offer health at the middle school. The state frameworks say that we should be offering health, but again, we didn't just, we had to cut positions. As you know, that position was a full-time position. It went down to a part-time position only because of budget cuts. This makes good sense to, to bring health, excuse me, into the middle school. We have a point, it'll be a .5 addition to present staffing levels. And then the other piece was a digital technology position, again, .5, it's not a full-time position, it's a .5 position. Presently, we have an art teacher who is .5, who has a skill set in this area. It would allow us to take advantage of the iPad airs that we have there and allow students to become more familiar with digital technology as, as a special, I believe you guys, is how you refer to them. So it would be expanding that position by .5. And then at the high school, the present position of the librarian, as you know, we brought that back last year as a .6. It had originally been a 1.0. The goal would be to bring that from a .6 to a 1.0, so it's a .4 addition, and we would be looking for somebody who could, has a skill set in the area of computers, as Mr. Ramallo mentioned, maybe in the area of coding, and being able to bring coding to the high school as an entry-level position, but also cover us with regards to the library services that Niaske is looking for. So that would be a .4 position. As you can see, a lot of these are not full-time positions. These are, again, we're being very prudent about what we're, what we're bringing back and trying to, again, we talked about this in the ride, building, bringing back the foundations that we need, and then we can look to build upon it. And the last thing you see there is the adjustment counselor at the high school, which we've, we've discussed that many, many, many times. The clear need for additional support services for our students, for our students' parents to be a conduit to services that they're receiving outside of the district, just clearly a need for an adjustment counselor here at the high school.
Two questions.
Yep.
So somebody that's getting out of college, graduating with a bachelor's degree, it's $50,000 their first year out?
Actually, it's a little bit less than that if they're a bachelor, and it's a little bit, if they're a bachelor, it's, I think, 44 and change.
Wow.
If they're a master's step one, it's 45 and change.
We always use $50,000 for an estimate.
But you don't know if you're going to be able to get somebody right out of school one year, they may have one or two years of experience, so you.
So that $50,000, that's for whoever we get.
That's an estimate.
That's what it is.
That's just an estimate, right. And then whatever, so it could be, you know, oftentimes it's a little bit less, it might be 44, 45.
Sometimes it's a little bit higher.
But we're not looking at paying anybody.
We don't know who we're going to hire yet.
That's not a capital either, it could be 52 potentially.
It could be 52 potentially, yes.
Yeah.
That's a ballpark.
Yep, it's an estimate, yeah.
All right, second question, with regards to the nighttime custodian and then the outdoor person. Who does the snow move at the school? Is it, is it the out?
It's one of the jobs of the custodians.
Whoever's the daytime person.
No, everybody.
So everybody chips in.
Also including the facilities manager. It takes every, all decks on, yeah, all hands on deck.
Because I know that we, a lot of times we don't have school, because I feel like it's just we don't have enough hands on deck to do all that.
Well, keep in mind that it's, Jeff facilitates with Mr. Furno in the Department of Public Works. They do, they do a lot of the, the access roads and the parking lots. We do stairwells, we do entryways, we sand, we salt, we do all of that, so it's in, it's in collaboration with them.
Oh, absolutely.
And Jeff will also, if necessary, get the, get the parking lots cleared too, if he has to, so.
Okay, so my question really is, as far as the outdoor, so how many people are doing the outdoor?
.5.
I just, I just don't, I don't agree, like, why can't we add that in? I feel like that's.
You're talking about the grounds are separate from snow removal.
Well, I'm just, I was just asking a general question. But I'm just wondering why we haven't included that in as a necessity.
Again, because we were trying to be pragmatic about how far we wanted to go and not, not to be over.
Mhm. Very judicious about our, you know.
But I, there's not anybody in here that would not agree with you that, I think that we should be thinking of that down the road as, as an absolute need right now. We're lucky that we have the people that we have, they're great people, and they, they go above and beyond all the time, and we're very fortunate in that. And I know that sometimes people don't realize that there's really, you know, one person working half a day taking care of all of this space, which is.
In along with Jeff, too.
Huge, huge. I mean, Jeff does, Jeff does it.
A lot of work.
Way above and beyond, as does Dave Pope, as do all the other custodians. They all go above and beyond. But your point is well-taken, but we just felt at this point, we were trying to get sort of a practical and a realistic number for us to start with, so that we were addressing as many needs as we could without going too deep into the monies. Kind of what we do here in Douglas.
Right. Because if you recall, we did present that additional needs budget too, so in addition to the grounds needs, there are many, many needs, and these are some of them.
I am. It's just, it's something that people from the town can see. They don't always see what goes on inside the building. That's my, that's the way I'm thinking.
Certainly something that can be revisited.
That's all.
Certainly something that can be revisited.
These are all needs, I get it.
If the committee feels strong, it's something we can revisit and, and look at. We've got a couple of months before the school year begins.
Right. In closing out the school year as well, so.
So I didn't know if any of the administrators had anything that they wanted to add to that, did I do a fair enough job of representing? Very good. So, and then, I don't know if Courtney wanted to talk about the, the dollars and cents.
Yeah. Well, I'm going to try to make sense of it. So at the bottom, I just kind of presented a little summary. So at the top is the amount that was approved, and as you know, with the override passing, it brought our budget back. There was a little bit of, the amount that was on the town meeting warrant was not exactly the, the original amount. It's only off for a few dollars, it doesn't matter. So it brought it up to.
The amount you have here is from town meeting, right.
Right, it has to be.
Yeah.
So $13,323,500 is what we were brought up to. So as you know, again, the approved budget was $12,679,853. So as you'll recall, we did present to you, along with our coming down to the original appropriation amount, we presented you with a listing of $132,358 of reductions that is a leadership team we all came up with. So we did, again, we've been working very diligently and very well, and for many, many, many hours, putting a lot of work and a lot of thought.
Trying to be as pragmatic as possible.
I know Kevin, Mr. Mainz has said it many, many times, but I also, as a businessman, I want to say how much I appreciate what I see going on with all of the administrative team. They've put in enormous, actually, I've never seen it in my 25 years being in this business, but to the extent that we've been doing. To Mr. Mainz's point, I want to reiterate that, you know, we all know as an administrative team, we have that, what was it, roughly $800,000 of additional needs that we presented before. We're all aware of that, and that's why we work so hard as an administrative leadership team to look at, and I really love how everybody really thinks about everybody, not just themselves. So we really do as, as an administrative team, and we spend a lot of time looking into that, this. So yes, they looked into and prioritized what Mr. Mainz just went over, far as these additions, but also we went back into that listing of the $132,358 and said, okay, look at it again, what can you, now, keep in mind, they did need everything that they put in that budget, but they looked at it again and gave up, so they, they're adding back, it's hard for me, all this, what we're doing here. Okay, the amount they're actually adding back to the budget is $56,034 of that, to say, yes, we really do, not that they don't need it all, but.
So instead of cutting $132,000, we're cutting 76.
So it was still $76,324, we're still, they're still saying, I'm willing to go without, so we can add that back towards these, these positions here. So keep in mind that all the administrators were willing to go without $76,324 of it to, for that $266,366.
So again, foundational.
That we're adding back.
We're talking about foundational.
Mhm, right.
And to their credit, they, they took the time to really look at it, and they know that in doing so, that, that might be, you know, a position in, in the half right there.
Mhm, exactly.
So are we voting on this?
So what we, so we have the $12,679,853, the amount that recommended to add back to the budget, which was previously eliminated items, it's 56,034. The amount recommended by the administrative team to add to the budget, the positions and other things that Mr. Mainz articulated, the 266,366, brings us to $13,2,253. The amount appropriate is $13,323,500, so that leaves a 321,247. Now, as you know, we originally increased the use of school choice by 400,000, so less of 321,247 is a difference of 78,753. So what we've done is we've made an adjustment to the school choice. Okay, we are still using some school choice.
Right. But we've added back 321,000 back to school choice revolving as a, as a holdover. I don't know the right word, but.
But, but what I do want to let you know, a couple of things to remind you of, is we haven't closed out the year yet.
Right.
And when we did come up with the original plan, using the whole 400,000, you know, we were looking at what we, what I was estimating. No, it was just an estimate. I still feel that's a good estimate of what we will probably close out of general fund, but I do have some other good news for you this evening that.
Good news.
DESD.
We've run a lot of reading.
I know, we never get good news, so listen very carefully, okay?
No good news.
We did get, actually, it was mid-afternoon, that we received the final school choice numbers for FY 18. Now, recall that when they put the figures on the cherry sheet, okay, for both me, the school choice in, for the school just, you know, school choice in, but also for school choice out, for the assessment for the town, it's an estimate based on the prior year. And unfortunately, they know how, the way things work a lot with the state, they don't have the final until, I got it today, ten days before the end of the fiscal year. Isn't too helpful, but it was good news for our side at least. Um, we will get seventy-eight thousand, seven seventy-one more in school choice. So that mitigates seventy-eight thousand, seven seventy-one, more than what I have been with my, you know, I'm very conservatively prudent, prudently conservative. So that is also buffering, um, our liability exposure financially here as well.
Isn't there another thing that we also get to around this time, where Neely has to put together?
Um, it's, it's circuit breaker, but that's a file that gets uploaded that has not been done yet. We don't have any figures on that, so we're still, you know. Neely and I work very closely together to come up with a very good estimate, the best we can give you. And I'm always, even though percentages, it might come up with higher percentage, we still keep that prudently conservative figure until we get.
So that might be good, too.
An amount that's, you know.
State said seventy-two percent, is that what they said, they would go no lower than seventy-two, but you don't believe them so?
Yeah, but again, you know, I wait, and not, not only that, I don't like to come to the school committee and increase that percentage. When we don't know, what really matters is the eligibility and the file that's uploaded, so we'll, we'll just wait until we get the final numbers there.
And that, we should have that in August?
No, isn't it come sooner?
Um, hopefully, it, it depends.
By August.
Oh, yes, absolutely, yep, absolutely.
Oh, well, I guess, we might have it for our July meeting, or no? Not likely, yeah.
As far as the final, yeah, yeah.
That, that was my point, is like, we're probably not gonna.
It's better, it's better to count on August, because actually, in addition, remember by then we will be closing out the books. We'll have all of the fund balances available, we'll have the circuit breaker, we have the school choice, and we'll also have that carryover balance for school choice, which we can't know until we close out the general fund. So, which is something we do every year, which is fine.
Yeah, we take the good news.
And the one hundred and eleven thousand?
So we're still, still using that.
In the circuit breaker, right?
No, no, we're still, we're still keeping it where we, where we, where we were. But again, the balance, we have a good, you know, as we did speak, we have a pretty good balance there, you know. Um, I would let you know if I felt, and I would never even propose anything to you, that we were bringing it down so much that I felt very uncomfortable. I also work with and speak with Neely about it, three of us meet to make sure we're comfortable with it. Because, you know, it gets her nervous, too, you know, she has to be able to cover things, um, they come up, too, and they can come up at any time, so.
Again, you, you kind of discussed this last, last August when we did this, and in my mind, I'm kind of doing the same exercise. You know, we're, we're looking at two hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in positions to approve tonight. We've also been able to add back into school choice three hundred and twenty-one thousand to carry over, um, you know, further. So again, when I, when I look at this, I say, okay, these are FY nineteen positions. We've also just carried three hundred and twenty-one thousand, hopefully forward into FY twenty, that would fund these positions not just for this year, into next year. Again, assuming nothing else changes, which we know is not gonna happen, but just the, the mental exercise I'm doing here. So I, I would, I would feel comfortable that no other changes, we, we can fund these for the next two years at, at the very least. Is, so, just to kind of, you know.
Oh, we go through the same exercise, and we appreciate that you do as well, because it's very important that you, you guys feel comfortable as well.
We've all made it very clear that we, that our goal is to make sure that these are sustainable positions.
Exactly.
They're important, they're necessary, but there's been plenty of important, necessary positions that we've had to cut in very difficult times. The, the hope is that we were able to maintain and sustain these.
Well, thank you, and thank you to all you for.
Yep.
We do, yeah, so I'm looking for a motion.
Um, can I just, I just want to explain, just, just in the interest of full disclosure, because, um, Jean Lovett, Finance Director, would like this, um, tomorrow morning. But, so I took the liberty, I, I know I, I don't usually do this, okay? But I did prepare this budget, in the interest of full disclosure here. This budget that I presented to you this evening does incorporate everything that we went over with you this evening. But I don't want you, I felt uncomfortable doing that, because certainly I will make any changes that you would like to make. But if you do so approve everything that's been presented to you this evening, I have already incorporated that in this budget. Just want to make that clear.
This will be turned over to Jean, is that what you're saying?
Yes, exactly, if you, if you so approve, I don't want to presume that, um.
Well, we already had approved this before, this was the one that was presented.
No, this is.
Back in April, but then you included this stuff in it.
I included everything.
So this was the original that you just updated.
Exactly, with everything that we discussed this evening.
The two sixty-six, this is. So we should, yeah, so we should just approve that.
Correct, and the, and the amounts changed with that hundred and thirty-two thousand dollar, three fifty-eight, um, hundred and thirty-two thousand, three fifty-eight changes, too. Everything that they wanted to add back or keep out, all of that was adjusted, as well as the school choice was adjusted in the high school teacher salary line. And then I also presented you with an update, if so approved, of the, this is a sheet that I do for you as well.
Yep.
Um, delineating all of that, and I updated the last page of the budget, um, with regard to the school choice as well. As far as that little summary box that I have there.
Yep.
But I don't want to presume anything, but Jean was saying she had to have it tomorrow, so. I will be willing to make any changes that you, you would like me to make.
But I, but I think that if there's a lot of time and thought put into this, this wasn't just like something that you just threw together, so I, I think that that was.
Enormous amount of time.
So I think that's fair what you did.
Thoughtful process. Mm-hmm.
So, can we approve them in bulk, or should, or is, is that appropriate? Or if we, if, if so, if the desire, or should we go through these one by one in your opinion?
Um, that's entirely up to the school committee, you could ask the, the rest of the school committee members, um, how would they would like to do it. And whichever way that you, the majority of you would like to do is perfectly fine.
So I will start off by looking for a motion to approve it in entirety, and absent that, we would look to go through them one by one.
Are there any questions that, that, that the admin can answer, or is everybody, is everybody? I just want to make sure I presented it so that you have a clear understanding of why we're doing it, if there's no question.
Are you all in agreement?
Oh, yeah.
No fighting?
Yes. As I said, we're a team.
Listen, I think you could direct traffic and weed whack at the same time.
So what do we think, can anyone?
I think in, in bulk would be fine.
So if I make a motion to accept the administrative team recommended budget adjustments post override as presented?
Yeah, and I want to just add, in the amount of.
In the amount of two hundred and sixty-six thousand, three hundred and sixty-six.
But there's a bunch of things that we adjusted in the budget, it isn't just that, it's also, yeah, so if you just want to say, I, I.
We're actually approving this right here.
I think that the way that Kelly stated it is fine, because this budget does include everything in it. So I think the way she stated it was fine.
Yep.
Um, and if you want to put, if it makes you more comfortable, if you would like to say, which includes, you know, um, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, three sixty-six in, in, in positions, if that makes you more comfortable, that's fine as well.
So moved.
I don't know, I don't know why we just moved, so can we do it again?
Yeah, start, start fresh, especially for the person taking the meeting minutes.
I'm supposed to remember what I said? All right.
I think what you originally said is probably fine, but we kind of got it garbled, so.
So I move that we approve the FY twenty nineteen general fund budget administrative team recommended adjustments post override. In the amount, no, we don't want the amount.
That's not all of them.
Yep.
How about, do you mind if I make a recommendation?
Sure.
Okay, how about if you vote the FY two thousand and nineteen proposed school committee budget post override?
Yeah.
School committee meeting June twentieth, two thousand and eighteen, as presented.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion from Kelly.
Second.
Seconded by Jillian. Any further discussion? Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? You need a missed approval.
Just one more thing before we actually move on over to the school business and operations managers report.
Okay.
Um, if you could please codify the appendix C, because you, you actually want to vote on what was presented this evening? Because then it's subsequently, we negotiate FY nineteen and twenty, which will happen later on.
So.
Because you are adding some, some positions and changing some amounts, and we didn't vote it on, on it the last time.
Well, all the new positions, we did vote.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, we did.
You did vote every time.
All we did is get presented a different head.
Yeah, this is just reformatted.
Okay, as long as it didn't happen for sure, I just want to make sure, sure, so we don't have to come back later on, okay? Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Yeah, we did one, we did one by one, right, last.
Okay, absolutely fine then.
Um, so, before we go on to the next piece, so, thank you very much, thank you to the admin team for their, their, um, efforts behind all of this. But in, in the conversation that we had in the ride home today, the one thing that we talked about is that, and I've said it a couple of times now about putting, putting together the foundation again. People need to understand that when you look to implement some new programs, new pathways, there's going to be some expense that will be associated with that. If you need to hire a, a teacher and you need to get textbooks, those are some of the things that are going to be, that the committee's gonna be looking at going forward. Because each of the steps that we want to take in order to be as competitive as possible going forward, will have a dollar, a dollar sign to it. Now, I think we've, we've proven that we'll try to find, how does, um, how does it go, Mr. Romano, a dime?
My line.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We could toss a coin to see whose line it is.
Very well.
But we've been very good at stretching and making things work, and we, but, but there still is going to be. There's, if we want to be competitive, competitive does involve money.
Further investments beyond this budget.
And, and the hope is that, like I said, that it's gonna generate more excitement about people coming in, we'll get more money coming in in the form of school choice, grant monies that we talked about, and that, but, but just, I want to make sure everybody's clear that there will be, we are gonna move forward and we, we're committed to it. There will be some, we will be coming back in a year or so saying, we want to add this, 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 and this, and this is what it's gonna cost us.
Right.
We're gonna do that.
But the good thing is, is a lot of careful deliber- deliberation and thought on both the school department's side and the school committee's side, so that's a good thing.
As well as vision.
So, before, before you move, I, I will bring this, you know, just as an FYI, the, they, I can't remember the body in Massachusetts, but they, they took the millionaire's tax, I can't remember the official, off the ballot for November, so that was a potential revenue stream that we're looking at in the future, which, you know, doesn't seem to be, again, I, I don't think anyone was actually counting on that right now. But, you know, it was something that was potentially good news in the future, but that, that is no longer, um, at least on the ballot at this point, so. For those that were tracking that, that didn't hear that, it's been taken off the November ballot. Sorry, just temper us a little bit.
You took, you just took away my earlier good news. No, we still have good news.
Yeah, all right, so we will move on to the school business and operation managers' report. Transfers and reclassifications?
First for you, the FY two thousand and eighteen general fund budget transfers, number thirteen. These are all, there's just a few there, transfers requested by administrators.
Any questions?
Anyone have any questions?
Seems pretty straightforward.
I'll make a motion, ready? You guys have anything? Good. Which one first, does it matter?
The transfers right now.
We're just doing the transfers right now.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the FY two thousand and eighteen general fund budget transfer, number thirteen, school committee meeting June twentieth, two thousand and eighteen.
Motion by Jillian, right here, a second.
Second.
Seconded by Julie, just beat you, Kelly. Any other discussion or questions? Okay, all is in favor? Aye? It's, okay, unanimous. Okay.
Okay, um, we have the FY two thousand and eighteen reclassifications, number eleven. The first three are, um, to utilize the funds in the health grant.
Okay.
Um, we got that very late this year, so we actually had to pay nurse subs out of our general fund line. But now we, we realize we can actually reclass them to the, um, nurse grant to use up, I mean, the health grant to use up, um, those funds that are for nurse subs, those are the first three. Um, the next one down, the twenty dollars, is we're still trying to utilize the balance in the FY two thousand and eighteen Puerto Rican, Puerto Rico, I'm sorry, hurricane.
Yep.
No E there, grant. Um, I'm hoping to use that up, actually, before June thirtieth, but I don't know if I'll, I'll be able to, we'll see. Otherwise, we can carry that forward. And the next, um, one, two, the next two down, that was an account era for posting. Um, so we are going, we're moving those to the proper account. And the next three, we, um, we had to, um, utilize the general fund to pay for some special ed transportation. Um, and we're able to move that over to the regular one-three-six line, um, which is the separate warrant article for sped transportation. So we're doing reclass on those. So does anybody have any questions?
And for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the FY two thousand and eighteen reclassifications, number eleven, for school committee meeting June twentieth, two thousand and eighteen.
Motion by Jillian.
Second.
By Kelly. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, unanimous. Thank you, Gordon.
You're welcome. Um, the next on the agenda is the FY two thousand and nineteen administrative and non-union salary wage increases. And we bring these every June for the subsequent fiscal year. So the first one is the administrative positions for FY nineteen. Um, and this was, uh, budgeted for the one point seven-five percent increase for FY nineteen. And the ones that are italicized were, um, let's see, which is the superintendent's, um, middle school. Those are separately, were separately determined. And then I have a TBD for the elementary school principal, because certainly we haven't hired that position yet, so.
Did we find somebody?
Not right now, we have not. Uh, going back to a, a second round of interviews, um, early next week.
So are these two separate?
Uh, yeah, we do them one at a time, one at a time, mm-hmm. So does anyone have any questions with regard to the administrative positions?
No.
Do you have any questions, Kelly? Do you have any questions? Okay.
Need a second, Julie?
Do you have an extra?
Make a motion and.
Oh, you didn't get this one?
No, I didn't, yeah, I put it on, maybe it's in the, I put one on.
It was separate from everything else.
Yeah, I put one in front of everybody's, maybe it's underneath the folder. Does anyone have any questions?
Let's give Julie a second to look at it, so. Kelly, any questions?
No.
Good. So I will entertain a motion on the administrative positions first.
I'll make a motion to approve the FY two thousand and nineteen proposed salary schedule for the administrative positions for the school committee meeting June twentieth, two thousand and eighteen.
Motion by Jillian. Here a second.
Second.
Seconded by Kelly. Okay, any other questions, comments, discussion?
Nope.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Absent?
I meant to say aye.
Okay. It's unanimous.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, the next one is, these are all the, um, non-union positions, um, that we have. So the first page, and there are a few changes I will be outlining to you, but the first page is the same as always. Um, the paraprofessionals degree and non-degree, and ABA therapist degree and non-degree. And again, these are all one point seven-five percent. The second page is the same until the bottom part, which I'll get to in a minute. We have the secretarial business office, bookkeeper business office, secretarial full year, and secretarial clerk school year, all one point seven-five percent. And as we discussed earlier, um, at the bottom is where we have, um, the proper titles and categories, I should say, for both the network technician and the technology data specialist, and the proposed rates for those positions. We looked into both of these categories at great length. We did look at area school districts, I can tell you that our rates here, particularly compared to Northbridge, when I got what, what it was there, I said, well, there's, there's no way that we'll ever be anywhere near that. But these are very, you know, reasonable rates for the positions, what their responsibilities are. And we did cover the, cover it, what you voted for in the budget as far as the increase for those two positions. They would remain on step three, which is a step that they're on now. So what I did was, is you, is you know, you can't look at just the people that are in the position. In other words, you have to look at it as well as, if, if they left as well. We do still feel that the technology data specialist, as far as the step one, is kind of low, so we might have to, if people did leave, we might have to revisit that in the future. But we're, we were trying to look at, you know, trying to be reasonable, knowing we're not, we're just never gonna get where, where some of the districts are at. But yet, it's, was so low in where the categories and the rates that they were put into. And we, we needed to address the fact we didn't have the appropriate categories as well.
Question on this one, and actually probably applies to the last one, these amounts are already reflected in the, the budget that we just approved?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
That's correct.
So this is just approving the details?
Yeah, the codify it, and also it's particularly having the, um, the, the most important thing here is to have the positions actually delineated in a, in an appropriate category, uh, which they never were before.
Yeah, no, it's, but, but general for all the positions, the, the dollar amounts reflected here for FY nineteen are in the budget.
Absolutely.
That we put earlier.
Absolutely, yep.
Okay.
And then the next, oh, I'm sorry, before I move forward with that, I just want to ask you, with regard to that, does anyone have any questions? Because that's the only new thing on this page here.
I don't have any questions in regards to that, but, um, I know that we had brought this up months ago, and I don't even know if this is the right time to bring it up, but now that this is in front of me, we have discussed the, this pay scales for many of these positions. Many of these positions are very underpaid, and I feel like I need to advocate for this, because if we can't get them higher, then we should be maybe offsetting it with like a day, an, an extra personal day. And I don't know where and when we talk about that, we did try to talk about it at a certain point, and then so many things kind of just went haywire. But it's a disservice, we're losing good people because we cannot pay them money.
Yeah, we, we totally, totally agree with you, and, and to be honest with you, we actually have, um, three other items that we consider priority items that we're waiting to close out the year. There's one, there's really the biggest category is the paraprofessionals. Um, there's one, there's really the biggest category is the paraprofessionals. Um, we absolutely, Kevin and I have spent a lot of time doing research on that, we totally, totally agree with you on that, absolutely agree with you on that, so we are looking to, to, to address that, along with the fact that we're also reviewing and updating our employee benefits manual is what it's called, it's, we've probably changed the name of that as well, and that's where it has all of the, you know, the, um, vacation and longevity and holidays and things, so we would be working in conjunction, we would be working on, looking at these rates in conjunction with updating that employee benefits manual as well, so those two kind of go, go together, go hand in hand, so.
So could, could we come back in August with a, with a recommendation from the administration on the paras, I think in particular, but I think all these categories?
Oh, we absolutely were planning on doing that, absolutely, we're planning on doing that.
Thank you.
We totally agree with you, the whole administrative team agrees, because it does affect all the principals, Neely, her staff, Laura, I mean, it affects everybody, um, in, in their buildings, so, but we also have the employee benefits manual, which.
Yep.
Goes hand in hand with that as well, so, believe me, we did not forget that, absolutely not.
So that'll definitely be an agenda item for.
Oh, absolutely.
Our, our August meetings, or the one that we have scheduled.
You can't, you can't correct this in, in one fell swoop.
No.
Right, and I, I don't expect that at all, I just know that we kind of talked, we brought it up, and I don't, I don't even know, you know, what happened, but we just had so much going on that it kind of went to the back burner, and I forgot to, you know.
We also didn't have really money to even discuss anything.
Well, and that was the other thing, too, you know.
I mean, we just don't have money, please, don't think we have money.
And that's why, last time I said, then give them an additional personal day, you know?
Yeah.
But we have been discussing it regularly at our leadership team meetings.
Oh, that's good.
Almost, I, I think almost every single meeting, actually, so.
So, we, we will come back with, hopefully with a proposal that will, we can at least get started to try to address some of this.
Absolutely.
I, I.
Oh, I'm not done, um.
Not done.
So the third page is the tutors and the substitutes, nothing has changed there at all, okay? The last page, this is something additional, this is just to codify basically what, what we are doing now, um, just the pay categories for special education summer school program. You know, we probably should have had it on here all along, but just realized, geez, we haven't had it on there, so we just made sure that we put it on here as well. And we've been having the summer school program, it's been going on for years, it's just that it hasn't, it has not been on this, and I said, wait a minute, we got to actually have that on.
So it looks like we have two, two different motions potentially, one for the first three pages, and one for the last page, or is?
Um, no, because we actually have been paying these positions, we've had the summer school for, I don't know how many years, but it's been in many years.
Yeah.
I do have one quick question, just out of curiosity, with the summer school, you've got occupational therapists, physical therapists, is there no speech therapist?
Okay, right, yeah, we did discuss that today, yes.